The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call a work session to order.
Would you like your creamer?
Some Priya. I'd like to acknowledge that we have all seven board members present. I'm joined to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, also Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And we have two intercity student council members here today. First, Mokee Cheng is our new intercity student council president. This is his first meeting as president, so welcome. And also Stephanie Calzada, and they are both from Preble High School. Welcome, Stephanie. And first, we'll have our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. And we'll start with our teaching and learning work session, and that will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have several discussion items. And the first will be the use of K-9 units in search activities policy. And I think, Melissa, is that you?
And Barb is.
Okay.
Our student expectation book refers to using K-9s for assisting with searches and defines how that will be employed. We just didn't have a policy that corresponded to the expectation book. So this policy is really just a reiteration of what has been in our student expectation book and is consistent with that language. We just need to adopt it for our policy, the language and the expectation.
Questions, Andrew.
So would these, it says must be accompanied by a qualified handler? Or is the possibility being opened here that it would be non-police K-9 units that would be doing this?
No, it is not.
But the policy does not, this policy does not limit the search to only being a law enforcement search, right? Or did I miss it? Or is that not the intent? Does the intent to leave open certain additional possibilities?
I'm unaware of who would constitute a qualified and authorized K-9 unit other than law enforcement.
Okay, that's a defined law enforcement term?
Correct.
Brenda.
If there were to be some sort of a bomb scare, does that include it in here?
That's correct. It talks about.
Where did it say that? I missed it. Illegal.
Contact the health and welfare of students and others. And in the first sentence. And in number three, the health and welfare of students would warrant such search.
Okay, so that covers anything else besides controlled substances?
Celeste.
Could you talk a little bit about number one, reasonable suspicion? So is that reasonable suspicion by the school district authorities? Reasonable suspicion by the law enforcement authorities? Or a mixture of both?
It would be reasonable suspicion by school district employees who then would request the assistance of law enforcement acting under the direction of the school district.
And what obligations for, now see, it says use without prior notification to students. And so.
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm sorry, on the, I'm in the, I'm in the policy. No, I'm not there. I'm in the, sorry, I'm in the.
You're in the policy.
I'm in the board policy manual. I'm in the second one.
446.2?
Yep, that's right.
So what paragraph are you referring to?
So the second paragraph, which is just one sentence, which says K-9 units may be used without prior notification to students and/or school personnel. And then the reasonable suspicion, so the reasonable suspicion comes from the school district authorities. And then they contact the law enforcement authorities, and that's the kind of. So the lack of notification and the school district authorities, are those two things, how do those two things jive?
Let me give you, can I give you an example?
Absolutely.
Okay. Information comes forward to school district officials that a number of students have marijuana in their lockers. That, and the school district officials do enough investigating into that information to determine. That would then constitute reasonable suspicion, and they could then bring in the K-9 to do a search by the K-9 of the lockers by leading the K-9s to the school to determine if there is a hit with marijuana.
Now certainly, in that scenario, the school district authorities are not, under no obligation to bring in the K-9. They could just simply search the lockers themselves.
That's correct because we have a locker search policy.
Right.
Thank you. The example you use is not one I'm familiar with. I would call a dog in, K-9 unit in, because I suspect something. My experience was in terms of concern about the health and safety of youngsters in school and keep it a drug-free place, drug-free place. Officers would come in with their dogs and have a search lock kids' rooms, class, just going down the hallways by the lockers. And then if they hit on my locker, that student would be called out to open up the locker in that student's presence.
Without reasonable suspicion?
That would be number two.
That would be the random preventive K-9 search.
That's number two on the policy. I think you were asking what number one said.
I was, yes.
And I'm just explaining what my experience with it was. The dog would hit on the locker, and then you'd ask the youngster to come to the locker. Do you have anything there before we open it up? Anything you would like to admit to make it easier, et cetera? And just proceed from there. But the dogs are, and we also did parking lots. And these dogs are really interesting. I'm very happy to say in my tenure at Preble, one locker, and that was, the youngster, they had a hat that was made with hemp, which I had never heard of until that point in time. And the other one was a car. And what it came down to later is youngster claimed that it was a friend of his that over the weekend had a joke in the car. But the dog could still pick up on that, that amazed me. But anyway, that's the way it played out there in terms of reasonable suspicion. It was the dog hitting on something that youngster would be brought to the vehicle in the locker.
That doesn't actually help. That just made things worse, sorry.
Well, that's okay.
So, okay. One more question, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. So we notify parents and students at the beginning of the school year that the so-called preventive K-9 sniffing can occur at any time. A school administrator believes that there would be a benefit to doing that.
Right, it's a preventive thing.
Yes. Yes, but I'm asking about the information conveyed. I just don't remember reading that, but yeah.
It's been in the expectation book, and I can revise it to make it clearer, correct?
That would be great. Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Mark, do you want to add how you, your experience? Did you want to add anything?
No, no, I'm sorry. I could add something, but I don't know.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. The advanced placement AP physics course changes.
Here's my opportunity to add something.
Are we still talking about the drugs here?
No, no, we're moving on.
Okay.
AP physics here. Joining us at the table this evening is Mike Fries, Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary, and Lisa Johnson, Curriculum Coordinator. They're here to present on several updates relative to some things happening in teaching and learning. So go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Fries.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us. Like I said, we have four things we've been bringing to you. AP physics is one bookend of it. The other bookend will be on our home construction program. In between, we'd like to talk about the math pieces together, if that's all right. And if not, we can certainly parse that off. I think to start before Lisa launches in on the first one, is just kind of publicly thanking her also. She helped us as Nancy Chartier and Andrea Landwehr and myself came on board in teaching and learning. She was instrumental in helping us with our transition in. And throughout the year, has brought a lot of experience to the table and helped us troubleshoot a lot of things. And mid-year, when Marie Kuchak shifted back to the classroom for the remainder of the year, Lisa was able to jump right in and continue the process we started with mathematics. I just wanted to give a nice shout out for that because she's been fantastic. We appreciate that. So with that being said, we just want to talk a little bit about AP physics, please.
Okay, so AP physics, the AP courses are currently undergoing revisions. And currently, AP physics for next year is changing. We currently offer AP physics B in our core, in our district. They are discontinuing that course. And they are breaking it up into an AP physics one and an AP physics two. So we are bringing forward to you AP physics one at this time, to continue offering as we go. At this time, there is no real cost other than sending some of our teachers to professional learning. And we're bringing that for the $4,800.
When Lisa mentions that they are changing this to something coming out through College Board, so we take the lead when we have these AP classes from College Board, and they've been staying on top of some of those ever-changing. And we traditionally have gotten some of these things where there's been changes and suggestions that we need to align to as well.
We're playing Captain May I, yes. Michelle, go ahead.
As you speak to the professional learning for the teachers, I'm assuming that the physics teachers have a clear understanding of the need for the change and why?
Yes, yes. And they're actually very pleased with this change because currently there's a lot in that AP physics course. So this really gives them a lot more time to go more in-depth into the teaching of the topics.
Can I assume that they'll also have an adequate amount of time to get the learning that they need?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, as also a physics student, AP physics B, we felt like we went through the year really quickly and we didn't have time to go over what, yeah. So, yeah, maybe really nice for future students, yeah, physics one and two.
Go ahead, Brenda.
And that was going to be my question, is at some point, are you considering offering the physics two course? And do you have a sense of whether there will be enough interest to be able to run that course?
Yeah, it's interesting. We've looked at the numbers, and we decided to bring forward just the first course for next year because that would be the most logical one to do. And then through our overall science curriculum work that will do the secondary level as we refresh and renew our curriculum, make decisions around the scope and segments of courses, I think we have to look very carefully at what's the viability of offering that additional physics course. So we have every intention of looking at it throughout next year and being poised to bring it forward as a recommendation. If we were to use this year's numbers as estimates, we have 15 juniors in the AP physics course that in theory would have been eligible for a second AP physics course. That would be looking at as the redesign continues. So we would have to look at the recruitment side a little bit. Other things also, as it plays out this year, as you indicated, to see how it feels with this different configuration, the expectations of math expertise now versus what the new course will entail. So we'll get a better sense of what types of recommended prerequisite knowledge will support success in first phase course, which will hopefully grow the numbers to hopefully grow it into the second year as well.
And then is this, does AP physics one cover what traditionally was the first semester? It's mechanics, and then AP physics two is more the electrical?
Yes, yeah.
Whatever it's called, wave theory.
Andrew.
So in the past, if you took AP physics B, did completion of that test likely give you one year of physics credit at a college?
Yes. AP physics B was equivalent to a full year of college physics. So AP physics one will be the first semester of the physics at a college level.
Okay, so it's not a question of do you want to keep it because it's going away?
Correct.
Right.
And they're both, they're both algebra-based?
Yes.
One and two? So is there, is there a physics option that can be taught that would be likely that universities would give a full year for a full year of high school? Or will, or there really won't be any anymore?
I think it's more, in my understanding, is we would be kind of taking a look at that. There's a website that offers how the UW colleges, as well as university system, one at a time, how they explain what kind of credit they give based on your AP score. They will likely be updating that based on. But then the other side of it would be the IB option, the IB physics. But again, a two-year program, so it isn't exactly a trade-off with a national bench or international benchmark external exam for that.
Okay, I'm just trying to, you know, if there, if there was a way to save, you know, people getting a year of college credit instead of a half a year of college credit, that would be nice, but it sounds like it's just going away, and it may have been biting off more than many students could chew anyways.
I think one of the things that we're looking forward to is improving our success rates and as well improving access to the course and improving success rates on the exam so that we see actually more students earning credit initially as well.
Yeah, I mean, the credit depends on what the institution's rules are in any case.
Right, but if we're not even teaching a whole year worth of physics, then no institutions probably would give a full year for it. I mean, some, where some might, now probably none will. And that, I guess that brings me to my second question. Is it, is it expected that there should, won't be, if you said that there's two different topics, right? The electricity and magnetism is more a physics two thing, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So if instead of a broad-based course, we're having two separate topic tracks, is there a risk that, is there a significant risk that universities won't count it at all? Because they'll say, well, you had no electricity or magnetism in this class. You would have had both interspersed, or does it mirror college progressions pretty closely?
When AP redesigns, they work with the colleges, and this mirrors what you would find in a first semester college physics course and a second semester college physics course. So it's basically how the colleges divide their courses up.
Okay.
So as a matter of context, we're really taking the lead from College Board around this, correct? So we're, you know, working in collaboration with College Board, but taking the lead as they work with universities to, you know, to align and to provide credit for students as well, taking AP classes.
So we're being proactive, getting a little ahead of the curve instead of it just happening to everyone like it sounds like it will pretty soon. So, okay.
Chris?
It may have been said, but just to clarify for me. AP curriculum or curricula are not created by the district, they're created by the AP folks, right? And that's what we have to follow for our students' benefit in order to be recognized at post-secondary levels. Now, in terms of breaking this in two, have they provided the curriculum to break it up in two?
Yes.
That wasn't done locally?
No, that was not done locally. That is, and that's their, they physically broke it up into two courses.
Now, my next question, then in terms of taking the AP test in physics, is that also broken into two? After the first year, you can take part one, and after second year, part two.
Yes.
Any other questions? I'm just going to call myself. We're sending three people for professional learning, is that because of the AP or the IB physics at West?
Correct, we currently do not offer AP physics at West.
Because we've got the IB physics option? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right. Anything else? Okay, we'll move that forward. We'll just, mathematics resources to support Algebra II.
And, you know, we've got both mathematics resources to support Algebra II for kind of an exploration phase, and then middle school math resources that are kind of beyond an exploration phase. And we can kind of explain that a little bit here. As I mentioned, Lisa came on board, gave the board report piece just a moment. Lisa came aboard kind of mid-year with us to help us continue with this process. A process that has been, as you know, part of our Common Core transition, working through first standards and then working through development of curriculum. As we also watched in a parallel fashion as publishers attempted to adjust to the Common Core shift. They didn't get any sort of secret head start on school districts. So we are not alone in actively looking for high-quality resources to support the teaching and learning that needs to take place relative to helping students meet the Common Core expectations. So this has been an interesting journey to this point, and it would be a journey that does continue in years to come, we anticipate. And we can share the thesis with you as well.
Yep. All right, so if we start with the middle school piece, because that actually came first. The middle school, what we did is they field tested a textbook called the Go Math series. Last summer, they looked at comprehensive 612 series for math. This was the one, as they looked at a Common Core rubric that they felt they wanted to move forward with, looking at. After field testing it for three months, the teachers are feeling comfortable enough, they'd like to continue the exploration of that. Unfortunately, the high school part of the series had a little bit of a production delay, and so we were not able to field test the high school. So at this point, we're not comfortable moving forward with a 612 adoption. So we are coming forward with just the middle school portion for a one-year adoption. So with that, we are asking for professional learning to bring the teachers in to help look at that. And then the textbook costs, which as you noticed, total $133,514 for the year.
This will be partnered with continued exploration of the high school series as well as deepening our staff understanding around the Common Core. And really, they're in a place where they have become much more, not much more, but they've become extremely savvy consumers of this. So they, they wanted this extended look on this part of it before a long-term commitment might be.
Celeste. So is this textbook going to be able to take care of the teacher's needs? Because, you know, you and I have had conversations about the materials for a math curriculum, which in my opinion are all over the place. I think that has gotten better at the middle school level with, I want to say everyday math, but that's not it. With the other math, you know what I'm talking about. I think it's gotten better. So is this book going to satisfy the teacher's needs? Or is there still going to be a lot of, you know, workbook, I'm sorry, worksheet printing and PowerPoint making?
Yeah, I think it's a very important question that you're asking, one that I'm not going to definitively answer yes to. If I would say yes, we would be coming forward with a six-year or five-year request at this point. We're saying one year because they're quite confident in what they saw. But one of our commitments going in was to explore a more seamless 612 piece. And because we don't have enough to make that full commitment to high school, they said, you know, can we look at this? We did our due diligence at the middle school level, the high school hasn't had its chance yet to do its due diligence. But they're confident enough with the feedback that we received from them that they want this for the next year.
So if I may request, this time next year, I would like you to come back with a couple of teachers to talk about their use of this book, especially given the Common Core state standards, and how much they used it and how much they didn't, or whatever. I would like to know that because I'm glad that you are getting, and the three of us had this conversation. I'm glad that you're getting a handle on this, but this needs, it needs to happen sooner rather than later. So I'm glad to hear this, but I would like to have a report back next year.
I think that's excellent. I think that's totally fair. One of the things that we walked into really was this conversation. One of the first days on the job for Mr. Fries and Ms. Landwehr was to meet with secondary math teachers. We brought them in, and we wanted to find out what it is that they needed. And they've been working tirelessly to, and teachers and administrators collectively to identify exactly what you're talking about, Celeste, which is what are the resources that we can provide our teachers to support not only their professional development around the shifts that they need to make in Common Core, but also to meet the needs of their students, as well as to provide some sort of scaffold for parents to meet the needs of their kids as well. So that has been a continuation throughout the year, and I'm proud of the work that they've done. And yet, we're also still trying to reconcile where the, where the publishers are with having really solid, top-notch resources at our disposal. And that's been a lot of the dissonance for us as well. We would have hoped that some of those publishers would have been farther ahead than what, than what they are. And to, you know, to Mike's credit, he held them accountable too, to we want to have a good product. We just don't want to move something forward, and we want to value the opinion of where our teachers are. So very fair request.
And if I may add one more thing?
You may.
Katie's so generous. You know, I think a lot of our teachers, because of the materials that we either have or don't have, I think a lot of our teachers, and I'm talking across many disciplines, have created their own materials. I think the issue is that those materials are not handed to the students all at once. They're given in drips and drabs. And Brenda and I have actually had this conversation about, you know, materials in college where professors, departments create materials, and they bind them in a book, and they present them to students. History topic four, you know, philosophy topic three. We still have some of those books, my husband and I, in our library. So I would love to see, if there are teachers who are creating great materials, I mean, I can, Stephanie Bielen is one who creates really great materials. I would love to see some of those teachers get them together to present to the students as a coherent curriculum piece.
It's interesting you mention that. We actually pursued that as a possibility, as one of the possibilities we explored with this. And the teachers, as they read in, we talked about, because publishers, because the Common Core is allowed for much more open source creation, much more sharing nationally, we were trying to figure out, could we do that in a viable way that would still adhere to copyright laws? Because sometimes open source isn't really open source.
Yeah.
Somebody already refotaled, copied, scanned, and posted. So we couldn't quite work out the logistics of it, but I think that, especially with our increasing access to technology and electronic devices, that we would be looking at frankly self-publishing some things.
Exactly. Thank you.
Could you speak just a little bit in terms of, obviously, it was pilot and student performance, how it met the needs of all students?
Well, one of the things that we looked at was, we used the publisher's, the Common Core publisher's guide to narrow down our choices. And within there, we also took a mind to the different flavors, if you will, of our math courses that we offer. So we have team talk courses, we have courses that are, that have ELL need, et cetera. And then we incorporated that into, and we did our feedback check with our staff and with the students that participated in it to get their kind of attitudinal sense from it. We were hesitant during our field test this year to go for student growth data. We were hesitant to do that because of the sample size that we used. And we did meet with our grant, our program accountability, to talk through what might be the best way to try to gather learning data from a three-month pilot. I think one of the reasons we're interested in a year-long opportunity is to truly measure student growth from, you know, .8 to .25 years to go.
Certainly.
As a follow-up to that, I think you said something very critical, though, to the attitude. Any measures of confidence? A lot of mathematics has to do with confidence and attitude. What did you see or hear and some of the data you collected? Did you, you know, did it engage students more and, you know?
That's kind of funny you mention that because when I glanced at the books, I thought, wow, that's kind of wild and crazy. But that was one of the things that, it was eye-catching, the kids liked that. It was engaging in that way. And I can't think of the name of the special problems that were kind of the extension problems. They had a little jalapeno or a firecracker or something, and they.
Yeah. Engagement problem.
Yeah, and that, that played a very important role. Another piece that's something that we're learning with the Common Core is that it's not so much about skill and drill, where you get 40 homework problems with the same thing, just replacing the numbers. It's much more, can you dig deep? Can you apply? Can you solve real-world problems, if you will? And the way that this book has been set up, that came across favorably as, hey, you don't have to say 1 through 65 even.
Sure.
Rather, we have some real kind of digging. And the technology component with. And the technology component with video clips, et cetera.
Right. The kids really like that. Their feedback that we got from the kids is they really love the technology components with this. It actually has like the barcodes on there they can scan with their phones and get to personal videos, those types of things. So they, we found that the kids really did utilize that a lot.
Thank you.
Brendan.
I'm a little confused how a one-year adoption works. You said we're purchasing textbooks. If we don't like this after a year, are we going to be purchasing a whole nother set of textbooks?
They're actually consumable books.
They're all consumable?
Yeah, they're all consumable, and the publisher is giving us the teacher materials, actually for, as a free part of that, which is a typical part of an adoption.
So this will be, we go with this, we will see a repeated cost of the consumable products, okay?
That would be worked into the, any proposal with, I think, would say a six-year, and it would be payable, I think, the first time, and then they would just, you know, give you senior.
It's okay. I'm taking it a little personally here. Any other?
Chris.
Hey, I just want to point out, we've always had, as far as I know in the district, we've always had teachers involved in writing curriculum and choosing materials. So anything they're using in their classrooms, the district has purchased, and that was put together by a group of teachers to be there. Now that said, there's no one book, or even two, that are going to cover the entire curriculum that is written. And that goes back to, Celeste was saying about teachers filling that in, and it'd be nice that that would be shared a little bit more across the district where those gaps are. Now, one could argue that the materials that are out there, you can only pick and choose at a certain point in time what's available. And every five years, six years, you hope there are better materials out there based on your curriculum. So, you know, it does tend to improve, but we always want to be improving, there's no doubt about that. And again, to fill in some of those missing pieces would be nice.
Absolutely. I think the one thing we've really learned and worked with our folks, and our folks have, as they've lived through the Common Core, is the math practice standards, the students are expected to exhibit behaviors relative, so they're becoming very critical of what they view as an appropriate resource to include. If the resources are support students exhibiting the math standards, mathematical practice, then they're not really interested in using them. And that's where they do generate their own, they work with their colleagues. And we do have a nice repository at different levels that is actually reflected in our Algebra II requests. Algebra and geometry folks have worked very hard with materials that are appropriate to this point.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Takes us to Algebra II. Algebra II piece is a little bit different. We're, HMH field, sorry, production has caught up with the high school level, so we have a suggestion, a recommendation based on teacher input on how to proceed with that.
So currently, for this coming school year, our Algebra II courses will be actually transitioning to CCSM, to the Common Core. So they are actually asking to do the field test for the whole entire year, which will help them make that transition. The publisher, the book is actually going to be published right as we go. We got some advanced copies made for us, actually from Kinko's, I believe. And so they've taken a look at it, and they really do like what they saw, and they feel comfortable moving forward with it at this time. We also would continue to do just a three-month exploration with the algebra and geometry teachers throughout the course of next year, as we evaluate that six-twelve model.
Michelle.
Just as a follow-up, parent, we talked about parent-friendly. Will you be doing any kind of surveying or feedback loop with parents?
I would say, just like we did with the middle school, we will, yes.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that. Okay, Brenda?
So just so I heard this correctly, so the geometry and algebra one is also going to be changing curriculum, and you're, but you're using this next year as a three-month pilot to decide what curriculum to change to?
No, the algebra and geometry have, they've been living in their curriculum documents these past two years.
Because they've been in Common Core, right?
Yeah, they've been fine, yeah. So they're comfortable with, to the extent that they're used to what they've been working on developing, and they like a three-month field test, similar to what middle school had this year, to say, is this the publisher one we want to bring on board?
Because we don't have a publisher for those classes right now?
We do not have anything that is Common Core-aligned for six, or sorry, for seven, seven and eleven. Algebra II...
We've been muddling through ourselves, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
And Algebra II, this will be their first year, fourteen fifteen will be their first year.
With a publisher.
With Common Core.
Oh, no, sorry.
Yes, with the Common Core expectations, which falls nicely along with the time, with staggered timeline with our capacity over the past three years as our organization to, for folks to help us make that transition. So this was following the steps of the latter, this is the last group. So they either have to, Algebra II has to keep writing all summer, or...
Adopt.
And by looking at the copies and then going through, you know, they have been excited to field test this year, and production delays led us not to be able to do that. But after seeing the advanced copies, they are still committed to saying, yes, we'd like this, so bust their end.
So potentially, what we're currently using for algebra and geometry may be better than the publisher, or we committed to going with, I mean, we've been using our own stuff because there hasn't been a publisher producing, I assume.
We will have the three months to really kind of...
Right, decide if that adds a lot to what we already have, basically, or if we have, what we have is adequate and is filling the bill for Common Core.
I think the other piece, too, Dr. Warren, is that we are conscientious of the work that went into place to write these units and the sustainability of that process. You know, one of the things that our teachers are so passionate about is staying up on, you know, writing of the units, and yet we need to look at, what's that viability to continue that work without a professional resource to help support that? So that's another piece that I think is part of, you know, their approach as well.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward, and we're on to home construction partnership course revisions.
And again, the home construction program, this is, I think, mostly a procedural piece, unless you have additional questions. But essentially, NWTC, as part of its normal curriculum revision and review process, has decided to take two of its existing courses that we had articulated and break them apart, essentially into four different sets of competencies that align very nicely as a replacement. And Lisa can talk a little bit more about that if you like as well.
Yeah, so just through their shifting of redesigning their courses into four, we need to also shift our courses and our courses in the course book to dividing up into four, so we can report our students' grades to NWTC.
Okay. Brenda?
So the curriculum is being covered as the same as in these two courses on the top, more or less?
More or less, yes. There's some tweaks and stuff in it, but it doesn't require it, NWTC is not getting any new resources, any of those types of things. It's really just how they're packaging it and dividing it up.
It is different enough that we wanted to bring it forward, however, we wanted to support our, our folks will be teaching it, we'll be reconnecting with NWT this summer to make sure that they're very clear on how these competencies are assessed in this way as compared to the previous courses.
And do, do the students take, like, this last year, residential architecture, residential construction, were they taking both of those classes simultaneously, or do they take one and the other?
Currently, they're taking one the first semester and one the second semester.
Other semester courses.
What we're going to do with this is going to be a little bit unique. In fact, that the two of them will actually go throughout the whole year, even though they'll be half-credit, just because they're not going to be able to cover those competencies within that short amount of time period within a semester. So for instance, when they're building a house, doing the framing, they're going to be doing that work all throughout the year. So we'll actually run that for the whole year, even though it's a semester course. So it'll look a little bit different, just in order to give our kids the best chance to really learn those competencies.
On the charts, it looks like we're taking two semesters' worth of work and breaking it down to four semesters. Is that what we're doing?
Actually, if you wind up the credits, they do still total the same, so there was no change in credits.
There's no change in credits, but just in terms of the time?
It's still three-hour block each semester.
Okay, okay.
It's just how we're dividing it up.
Okay. All right. And actually, I mean, if someone takes Blueprint Reading One and doesn't like it, then they're not committed to the whole...
Well, actually, we're...
Or no?
They're taking all of those, all those together.
All of, okay, okay.
So the program will be like periods six, seven, and eight. And then six, seven, and eight is, you know, some days they'll be in a classroom, you know, in a lab setting, some days they'll be on the job site doing the work, and the teacher's working through the competencies required to meet NWTC's objectives. We need, this program meets with NWTC, the stakeholders, the instructors and such, every six weeks to kind of check in to make sure we're on the same page. And Kim or Laurie Peacock, myself, our plate, Natasha, we connect to make sure that we're all on track with that.
Okay. Andrew.
So this is really just a recording system change, basically?
To fit their structure.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you very much. We'll move that forward. And that concludes our work session.
Great, thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Let's move to the organizational support work session. That will be facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Please bear with me while I get down to our chair. Alan, I guess you could start talking, huh?
Sure. I can talk, I'm good at that. Everybody at the table is Patty. Well, I don't know if everybody has met her over the years, but Patty has been my executive assistant since Levon Bishop retired back a while back. And Patty has been taking care of transportation, student transportation, for the last three years as my executive assistant. So needless to say, she hasn't been doing a whole lot of budget for me, but she has done a great job with the people of transportation, so. And she has worked a lot on the policies. We created a task, a transportation task force back in October. Carrie, Melissa, Kim, and then a lot of the people have been in and out of that, out of those meetings, and Patty has done a lot of the work along with a lot of other people who were part of that task force. So we put together the transportation policies that you have in front of you, and would, again, answer any questions, comments on the policies. It's split out into four different policies, so. The first one is the Student Transportation Services Policy and Rule. It pretty much is the main policy, talks about really, who in the district are we going to transport, whether legally, optionally, and it really is the main policy of the entire group. So if there are any comments, questions on the first policies?
The first thing I had in order was your transportation memo, and you sort of jumped on me, I think, right?
I mean, the first policy is the seven-one-fifty-one series, the policy and the rule, Student Transportation Services.
But, I mean, at least on my computer, the way it reads, Student Transportation Services Memo, then the policy, then the rules.
So is that just a... Right.
It just attaches to the memo. And overall, it covers everything. It just got attached.
I guess I'd like to go back and talk about the memo first, Alan.
Okay, definitely.
At least, because that's the order we have it here. And ask my colleagues if they have any questions or concerns about that. Could you walk through that memo, what your game plan is with all of this?
Sure, that's fine. Again, we just talked about, the first paragraph talks about the transportation task force being put together in October 2013. As with Melissa coming on board, we've worked a lot on policies, and she's done a lot of good work on doing the policies. That task force met, different groups met, you know, off on the side to pull together, again, the transportation policies. We had athletic directors, principals, administrators, clerical staff, pretty much everybody that has had some, staff that has worked with McKinney-Bento, homeless students, I mean, all of those, pretty much every type of student that we bus, we had somebody there to discuss the concerns and problems. We had, again, the second paragraph, the other result of the task force, we had some discussions, certainly Patty and I have had discussions over the last three years on how we, we think transportation procedures should work within the transportation. We just purchased a brand new software for transportation, and we are, again, we pay about seven and a half million dollars to our contracted bus carriers. And again, what we're looking at here is that, we are looking at, for the first time, to route our own students. There are other districts who do route their own students. And as we have looked at that, and again, Patty, very technical, has looked through, you know, the processes, the bills, the, you know, the comments you get from somebody saying, you know, why are there two buses coming out of the same place? Why do I see empty buses? Judy, the claim is not here, but it was a good at asking you, I see a bus come through, and then I see another bus come through. And it doesn't mean there wasn't a good reason for it, but those are the type of things that we're looking at, and we believe by routing our own students, the carriers certainly provide the buses as they currently do now. But we will be telling the carriers, these are the routes we want, this is the students that are going on this bus, then it is for you to make that happen. Versus now, they are doing routing on their own, and again, we have circumstances, and I'm not saying they don't do a good job, but we have circumstances where a first student bus and a later's bus is coming into the same school. And we know that there's got to be a lot of, there's efficiencies to be had. Now, as part of the reason, again, of looking at the transportation software purchase to give us the ability, we looked at a number of them. And again, our purpose is to, is to create some savings by doing it internally and making it more efficient. Again, in 2011, I eliminated the transportation manager position at that time, and again, changed it to an executive assistant, my executive assistant to a transportation. And again, as I mentioned, we just feel that there are efficiencies to be had.
Let me ask a question, let me clarify.
Sure.
We'd then be asking for another executive secretary, since now Patty would be moving to transportation full-time or what?
We will replace it with a paid position.
So it's not additional?
Whether it's an executive assistant position or it is a lower-level manager, that we haven't And again, the other, if you go to the last paragraph, one of the other recommendations of the task force has been, you know, we talk about the students that are McKinney-Bento students. And McKinney-Bento, you know, the law states that, you know, if a student becomes homeless, they get, they need to leave that home and live on the other side of town. McKinney-Bento says that we need to bus that student from over here back to their home school. We have students that are going for therapy, who are three, four-year-old students going to therapy for half an hour out of school, taking them there, picking them up. And right now, we're doing a lot of those pickups with a yellow school bus, and realizing that we may have two students on a bus, or three students on a bus. And if you look at the last paragraph, we've talked about it, and the task force talked about it, you know, we want to be able to find a way to transport some of those students without having them be on the bus for an hour and a half, and, you know, trying to get them back and forth. And we talked to a number of other districts, and they have looked at having their own internal vans. And our discussion was that we would look at purchasing four vans that would pick up students, they would be driven by our own employees, we would hire those drivers, and they would, instead of the yellow bus, we would have our own vans, and we would dispatch them, and we would tell them where to go, and here is your schedule for the day. We're also, we're looking at two other vans that would be...
Real cherry.
Real cherry equipped. Because right now, we have times where the bus company does not have the equipment there for us to... for us to, to deal with those students. And then maybe students who are regular ed students who have broken their legs. I mean, those are the kind of students, McKinny Bento students, students who are being bused from one spot on this, you know, because of their IEP, they're being bused from this school over here, all the way onto the other side of town. We believe that there, that, you know, there are savings to be had. Certainly, there are additional expenses, you know, with the vans. But I believe with seven and a half million dollars is what we spend currently, I believe that we can reduce it at least by ten percent, just by starting, by being efficiently. That we could, we could save roughly, one of the other things is, is parent contracts. Right now, with the bus carriers, if we have a student who is not eligible to ride the bus, but is on the route, the bus comes past, the bus company right now picks up that student and charges that parent, and the bus company keeps those down. In this scenario, we would be picking up those students, providing them the parent contract, and the revenues would come directly to the district rather than to the bus company.
Ms. Jeffers?
I'm sorry, it's you, not you. Thank you. So, this seems very promising, I have to say. One thing, once we have a better handle on the vans and the routes, I mean, I would really like to see a cost comparison. Because we have, and I'm, I have to tell you, I'm all for bringing some services in-house, like employing our own driver for that. And vans, which are obviously smaller, more agile, and better on gas mileage. But I would really like to see this laid out in terms of benefits, because, you know, in terms of financial benefits, but then also in terms of our own benefit in, in terms of transporting students. Because sometimes, sometimes when you look at things, it's maybe a financial wash, right? But the benefit for transporting our own students is much, you know, gives us, basically makes the financial wash a non-issue.
I think, I think you're gonna find that, that was one of our main reasons here too. I know we've been told that coming forward in the future, we're gonna have a lot of education customization, and we're gonna need to find ways to get students where they need to go in a better manner. So, you know, the, the software and all of this is gonna work into that. But when we talk about, you know, with the vans, whether it be a cost savings or not, the really, the better focus on this issue, because I think it will be a wash or a savings, is we have McKinny Bento students on the bus, sometimes up to an hour and a half. And that's ridiculous. I mean, but when you have to do it on a yellow school bus, and there's multiple stops, and they're having to piggyback it with other students, there really is no choice. And so the van issue will solve a lot of those problems that we're having, where students aren't just getting the best service that possibly we can give them.
And then even for some of the students who are taking classes in high school, so middle school students who are taking classes in high school. And I'm not talking about students at the Da Vinci School, but students who are just taking. So I recall that when my son was involved in that, there were two kids on the bus. And it was a big yellow bus. And it was a big yellow bus. And I felt only moderately guilty about that, you know, because we could get him there, but we couldn't take him back to school, back to his middle school. So, you know, I think that's important. In addition to the fact that I've heard, I'm just gonna slip this in there, since I'm talking. I've heard several concerns about the program at the Wildlife Sanctuary, in terms of the transportation in the middle of the day. So parents, you know, I've talked to parents personally, really very interested in selling the program to people I know in the community who have children that age, and that, that the time of day when they let out is just not conducive to parents who work. So I would love to see us solve lots of, lots of transportation problems. But in the future, when we're coming to make these decisions, I would really like to see this laid out. Thanks.
Yes, I'm, I'm wondering, with the parent paid contracts, there's a statement in there that says, "The existing bus route and stops will not be altered to accommodate parent paid contracts." What's the, the point then? Wouldn't that limited to just a tiny percentage of people who would be walking distance to an existing bus stop? Why wouldn't, I would presume, wouldn't a lot of parents be saying, "It's one and a half miles, but you drive past my house"? Why wouldn't we create a stop if that was a win-win scenario?
May I interrupt? Can we hold that? Can we just stick to what's on the memo first, and we'll go down through the policies after that?
Okay.
Bouncing, Oliver? I thought that was in one of the policies we bring up, not the memo.
Yeah, well, it is, but.
Okay, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't lose sight, there's too much here, to lose sight of. So can we hold that thought till then, because it's a good one?
One of the questions, the van question, I'm just gonna throw this out there too. I know sometimes with co-curricular activities, especially if students are going to a, the more individual sports, students are going to sectionals or something, and there's only one of them or two of them going.
Yeah.
Will we have the opportunity to use those?
Yeah, on the weekends or in the evenings when the vans aren't used for, for instructional. There also was talking, I know Al Banky, who's here, worked on it, is, he costed out the value of, let's say a school needs, like for golf season, needs it almost constantly, the use of a van, but it's during the day when we're transporting students. He would make arrangements for short-term leases for those time periods, because we don't really want the cost for the whole year when it's just needed periodically. But then for that month that they're using it on a very regular basis, they would just do a short-term lease. And he was costing out, trying to get the best package for something like that.
Just a comment in relation to the transportation manager. Ellen and I have talked extensively about, you know, what has occurred since that position was eliminated. And, and with a thousand students last year served through McKinny Bento, the level of homeless students that we have, and the magnitude of the, the different opportunities to support our special needs students, as well as all students, you know. I, I applaud the, the task force, but I also recognize and have worked in partnership with Patty, and she has done an extraordinary job. Most districts of this size would have an entire department behind her. And so I think that the other piece to keep in mind is, as Alan comes forward with another position, perhaps down the road, to backfill some of the, his needs. I, I think that it's been very apparent to me that people have done a significant amount of work, but that it has moved into weekends and some other things that, that over time is not sustainable, nor if we go this route, will be possible, if we're gonna really own this. But I think in the big picture for our students, this is a really, really important step forward that, obviously, Celeste, you have moved some things transportation-wise in the community that is helping our students, and this is another very positive step.
I have one before we go on. The part I'm concerned about is, I, I, maybe it's someplace I'm missing it. I don't see any numbers here. Did you run the numbers? I mean, I, I've seen your last sentence, last, last paragraph, last sentence, "We believe the cost, you know, will provide enough savings for this." And I, I personally can't operate that way. I need to see some numbers, that you've costed it out, and taken account anything else, or weighed as you see fit. But we need, in my mind, we need something besides this. We've gone from taking an apartment away, now to creating our own little bus company. And again, where are the numbers with that? I, it all sounds like it makes sense, but we do have fiduciary responsibility, and I'd like to see that. And I assume you must have done it someplace along the line. So I don't know whether it's too soon to ask it before our next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we would definitely have it before the next meeting.
There's no request right now to purchase vans in here, right? Conceptually, but there's not a.
Conceptually, yeah.
Yes, but not an actual request.
We would have official bids and.
And again, as we looked at the staffing, to do the routing of all of our students, we would need to have two full-time people. I mean, one would be Patty, and we would be adding another position, a lower position. And that's one of the three positions, and we, maybe I'll wait till we get to the positions before we go through that.
Again, to me, that's all a part of running the numbers to what we're paying now, and, you know, what this, this new package will cost. I'd also like to know, now that you have answered, now, we're gonna keep these vehicles. I know we keep some of our vans, maintenance vans outside, and I would hope we could find someplace to store them inside in Wisconsin winters, but just aside. I was set to move on to policies, yes?
Just, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I know we also have something with the bus initiative for extracurriculars that happens after school. Would that also happen, like, would that have something to do with that? Because I know that if people are, if like students right now are in extracurriculars or getting school help, that there's the city bus route that they can take for free, would that also take a place in that?
Would that, think that would be.
No, that would be completely, so the city bus routes would be completely separate from, from these routes. But looking forward in the future, because the city of Appleton does this program. And so they had so many students participating in the program. Now, their program runs all day, not just after school, but they had so much success that they actually, in cooperation with the Appleton School District, added a bus route. They added a bus. So, but we're not there yet. But no, the city program, I'm glad to hear you talk about it. You just made my day.
The bus manager for the city is retiring, so they will be getting a new manager, so we may have better luck.
Yes, I saw that, so yes.
It could go the other way too.
Yeah.
What you're talking about is like a sub-district run a late bus, where kids stay after school and participate in co-curriculars, rather than getting a free city bus pass, they can take a run at home. And we don't do that right now. But I think we are, at some point also gonna look at, when we do co-ops, I think we have one swimming team now, trying to get kids who are trouble over the Southwest, can't drive. That I can see how we can play as we get better at.
Moving on to transportation service policy, student transportation. Mr. Becker, you had a question?
So, yeah, I had, I had two. So the first one is, like I said, I, I understand that there might be someone who wants to walk to a bus, a bus stop because they're, you know, one point nine miles, and the other one is, is two. But why wouldn't we, if it was a win-win solution, why wouldn't we allow a parent to pay if the bus was going directly past, and it was a shorter distance?
And it said, I thought it said in there, it talks about not altering routes. So if that bus is going through that neighborhood.
Or stops. It says routes are stops, so you might want to revisit that.
So we won't, we would, we would pick them up on the way into school if it's on the same route. So yes, we would.
Okay, so you may add a stop, but you would not alter a stop? Is that what you're saying?
If, if the stop is also on the way that the bus comes in from the, from the route, but we have to remember that, you know, you got that radius around, we will not be altering the route of the bus to, to loops around the school to pick up.
Right, I get the, it, it sounds to me, I guess, I would interpret what you just said as, we may add stops, but we wouldn't modify routes. Where adding a stop seems like modifying a, I just wanna make sure that's clear in the middle.
Some of it just depends on.
I think why it says we want alter, alter stops is, so if you had a block, a very long block, and at the end of the block is the two miles, and at the other end of the block is one mile, and a parent wanted a parent paid contract and is asking for the stop to be at the one point five, we would alter that existing stop to accommodate that parent paid contract.
We would add it. So an add isn't an.
So we would alter that existing stop.
Alter.
Right.
Okay.
We wouldn't remove.
Other kids walk to accommodate the.
An add isn't, okay. We may alter the number of stops, but we would not change an existing pre-planned stop.
Again, part of that comes from the additional costs. We, when we pay the bus carriers, we pay for the equipment, but we also pay by the mile. And so if you, if you do start, you know, adding mileage to get the two hundred dollars, you may not necessarily pay for it, so.
Right.
If you are having to pay additional costs to go outside the actual route that it currently is.
Our average price per seat has been about a dollar seven a mile for the bus. So you figure that with a hundred and seventy-seven days of school, if you alter that route even by half a mile, you've lost money. So it's very important for us not to lose money on private pay contracts to keep the routes to their existing level.
With buses that only get about five dollars a gallon, or five miles a gallon, that's unfortunate, but if the mileage is that high per, per mile, because that we're, we have to be paid for the fuel. And that's, and that rate, and the, and the fuel varies by how much they're paying for. So, but, you know, certainly the fuel costs is, we add miles, and the fuel cost we have is.
I take care of these questions.
I had a, I had a second one, but if someone wants to. Okay. Have you taken any more look at the, the situation where part of, part of a well-defined apartment complex is inside the two miles, and part of it is outside of it?
Are you talking about for, for Dan's maybe, or for?
I've, I've, I've only heard that it happens. I don't know if it's rare, if it's a single complex, if there aren't any anymore. I've heard that it happened that sometimes a bus would transport some of us, one apartment complex had some students get busing and some not.
Well, we, we do go by the street address. So if the street address is different to that apartment complex, I would think most apartment complexes don't have the same street address. It would just be a different apartment number, so that would not be an issue.
Oh, so there's a.
It depends.
I think if the example Patty that you're referencing is, is probably a, a similar example in, you know, former principal at Edison, that was one of the examples there. And I believe that there's.
Different buildings.
Yes. And I think that, but I think that there's a bit more autonomy in us making those decisions if we were to take it, you know, within house, so to speak. So that might help out a little bit as well.
I guess I, I think it's something where, you know, you, some, sometimes although it might be a technically correct decision to say twenty-one-ten and twenty-one-twenty qualify, and, you know, twenty-one-eighty doesn't, the, for the, for the little, or maybe nothing, that it would cost, because it might still be one stop at the same place, versus, you know, the uproar that can be caused when something doesn't seem to fit common sense standards, you know, as I, I think that's.
And I just wanna preface that with, yes, logically, but I will also tell you, there are a million circumstances where the twenty-one-twenty gets bused, and then the twenty-one-twenty-two says, "Well, why ain't I getting bused? I'm just a block from him." And it snowballs. So if you really don't stick to your, your parameters that were set, everybody has a cousin who knows somebody who's getting bused who shouldn't be, and then why can't I?
Yeah, but if there's, I mean, there are well-defined complexes under the same management with identical building structures and setups, I would hope that we would take a, a look at.
I would say with that new software, you should be able to handle that.
Well, no, we can handle it, it's just.
The software does tell us the mileage.
Ms. Jeffers, you have a question?
No, not anymore.
And we use it, we use the same process to be consistent, because I, and I know your sad story, you know, Patty could tell you that how many times she gets called about somebody who thinks they should be bused. And, and to start with, I would hope we would, you know, just try to be consistent until we figure out where do we wanna.
You always have some people that scan the system, whether it's that, or they live in another district, but they bring their kid over to their aunt's and says, "This is where they live, and so they attend our district." I mean, you're always catching that and working with it. Any other questions or, or concerns? I have one yet. Do we have any obligation to private, relative to transportation, private or parochial schools? And if so, does any of this affect that?
Whatever we do for public school students, we are legally bound to do for private school students.
The biggest problem we have is the private schools not in, choosing a different start days than our schools. So we have days where we are, we have buses going out picking up parochial schools because they started two days earlier. Now, some of that is going to.
Race system this next year. Race system this next year will abide by, is abiding by our school calendar. Other than spring break week, but that was because we changed ours and they didn't have time to get theirs. But, I mean, they have been very cooperative moving forward on trying to do it the same calendar, which saves huge on transportation dollars. We still have Notre Dame starting in mid-August, so we'll be riding buses for about two weeks for them, and some of them.
I, I just want to clearly understood that the public school district, part of the budget pays for transportation for private and parochial students. A lot of people don't understand that. Any other questions or concerns?
Along those lines, there's no, I don't know, we can't charge the private school for their costs when they don't match ours, or?
No, no. Legally, we are obligated to transport all students in our district.
Yeah.
We still hold them to the two-mile.
Yes, we.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. And it's just those students who live within our district?
Correct, yes.
Okay, we'll move on, move that on to two weeks from now, pending getting the numbers.
Actually, there's one more thing. If we do this additional work with the minivan, or the vans, we're not obligated to provide that kind of service to the parochial schools.
No, we just have to provide service, and in fact, part of a service we can provide, then which I'll be exploring a little more this year, is if transportation for a private school costs more than one and a half times what it does to transport any student, regular ed, private and public combined, we can offer them a parent-paid, we pay them to transport their own student, and they don't have a choice, they have to take that. So, if if it turns out there's a case where we're only transporting two public, private school students on a bus, and that, of course, is going to be expensive transportation for us, we can decide to offer those parents, we would pay them the rate, the annual rate that the average costs, rather than transporting them. And so I will do the research, and then I will talk with those above my level as to whether that's somebody, something they want to pursue, because it will not make the private schools happy.
And sometimes we'd ask that voluntarily, we will pay, you know, pay you for you to take your student back and forth. And it's much cheaper than us having them on the bus. And some of them are, it's a win-win in some, some cases.
Yeah, some parents are more than happy to, and.
And how much would that be?
I have to cost it out at the end of this year. Last year, the rate was around $600 per student.
For the whole school year?
Right, right, that we pay for regular ed.
Right, sure.
Special ed does not get figured into this.
That's deep.
But if you have two kids on the yellow bus, and you can both get them off of there for $600, on a bus for a year normally is about twenty.
Forty thousand dollars a year.
Forty thousand dollars.
Think about the poor districts up north, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we use the vans during that two-week time if we have routes that have?
For, for the private schools?
For the private school students?
Most of them are Notre Dame, so it's large buses, yeah, they fill the buses.
So, it's big, large. Oh, okay.
They fill the buses. And for Notre Dame on the east side, a lot of our routes, we are using the metro transit.
Okay.
Where we're not using the yellow bus, we're, but we're purchasing the bus pass for the student.
Did we move on then to private vehicles to transport students? Anything to tear a point out about this policy?
I think this is for, again, for the, we, we have district staff that are transporting, transporting students with their private motor vehicle. I think in some cases it's been, I don't know, it's a good, good example. Whether the golf, if, if field trips that aren't using buses are.
I don't think that occurs. I think an example would be our social workers.
The social workers, yeah.
Yeah.
Our primary, our staff would be guidance sponsors as well.
Guidance counselors, I think. Maybe need to take a student home, or if the parent's not there, they're sick, or.
Yeah.
Right.
If he's sick at school, parent doesn't have transportation to come and get the student, the student needs to go home because they're pretty ill. A social worker will transport that student. A student who is a teenage parent needs to get somewhere for a medical appointment for, for her or for her child, and the social worker needs to assist in that transportation. Those are examples.
Would a, would a district employee always have the right to decline transporting a student in their own vehicle? I mean, would we ever tell them to? I guess I'd be concerned if, there might be a situation where it seems to make very, very good sense, but it seems like the comfort, just even a gut feeling of the employee that this is a bad idea should prevail.
We've had those issues about this school year, and we've worked individually with the employees, and we, in that, those particular situations, we did not require the employee to transport in, in his or her private vehicle.
Okay, and there's nothing here that would create that?
Policy does not create that.
Yes.
There are times, or I should say, I don't know how often it happens, but I know I have been the parent that has used my car to drive students somewhere. And right now, the policy for doing that is, is, does not require as much as what this new policy will require. So, I'm just wondering, and I, and this goes for the, looking ahead to the co-curricular thing, you know, what's being, what's put in place might be what's currently in place, but I don't think it's what's in practice all the time, based on my own experience running around in different athletic events and things. And I guess I'm just wondering what the plan is for making sure that, that this isn't a surprise, where, you know, principals think that the parent can just go get their vehicle checked and, you know, proof of insurance and things like that, because there's one more step, the back, well, the background check technically should have already been done, but there's one more step, I think, in here.
Yeah.
And I'm not always sure, I'll just say this, that it's followed. I think parents are driving kids in cars and.
Yeah, anybody transporting kids, we do the vehicle inspections here in our office.
Right. But somebody has to tell the parent that they need to have their vehicle checked, and I'm not sure that that's always happening.
That they need to have that done.
And I think with this whole thing in reviewing our policy and procedures, we're really trying to tighten that up and and make sure that that gets enforced, and remind it to building principals, PTOs, what have you, that if you're going to be doing transporting students, you need to have your vehicles checked ahead of time. And we have a checklist we'll have to do, come in, make sure that the background check is done. So, we're really trying to tighten that all up with this, looking at these policies.
With the new policies, okay, good.
We, we created a flow chart or, in a form of, of how all this will be tracked. It will be, where it will be housed, and who will need to do the various steps in the procedure.
And it's a lot of what we're doing already, it's just getting it more formalized and getting it out there and getting the information out there.
Right. Right, yeah. There have been times when I've been, you know, sent a notice from whatever activity I'm driving for, you know, and then there's been other times where I haven't had any information come to me, and I assume then that if other parents didn't have any information, they may be driving without having had their vehicle inspected.
And we would like to think that that's rare.
It's rare, yes. I don't do that often, so.
We're trying to make sure that, you know, all the kids caught it with, with.
Sure, okay, that's good, thanks.
I have a question under two, A, parentheses four. And it reads, "Not to be afflicted with or suffering from any mental or physical disabilities or disease which could prevent the person from exercising reasonable control of the vehicle." Is there a standard for that by any chance, or?
That's state law, so, Flori, can you go up to that? Was there, there, four, okay.
Four.
Four. So, I mean, are there examples of that? I mean, how do you determine that?
Is it epilepsy, seizures? Yeah, epilepsy would be one, one situation where you would be permitted to drive.
Well, it depends on what your diagnosis is, though. I mean, just because you're.
Depending on what the doctor said, correct, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I can think of situations in my previous life where epilepsy prevented somebody from doing, um, transport others.
Then, can I?
And if they have a driver's license with the determination that have not already been made that they could exercise reasonable abilities in driving?
Don't you either have your driver's license or not have your driver's license if you're suffering from epilepsy and a doctor ruled that you can't, when you just go from licensed driver to not a licensed driver right now for medical reasons?
But that may not be done yet.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if somebody's suffering, or there's some kind of medical condition, that may not be done yet. We're, what we're really looking to do is have people self-report this year. They need to make aware that if conditions change, that we really don't want them transporting our kids. They need to report that to the district.
Even if the state hasn't acted on their license yet, you're still responsible.
Correct.
Right, right.
People are very hesitant to give up their license and do whatever.
Yeah.
We're, you know, trying to, you know, tap into their moral compass to say, you need to let us know and not do it.
And besides, I mean, there's no way for the school district to reach into someone's medical records. And just because the doctor, the doc, you know, I know someone whose doctor said to her, "You should refrain from driving for this period of time until we figure out what's wrong with you," which she did. But her license was certainly not revoked.
A broken foot, or you're restricted from driving.
Right. You don't surrender your license, you just don't drive for that duration.
Right.
Yes.
So, when I read, this was the extra thing that I was referring to before that I forgot. When I read this, my first, and still when I read this, do, does every person that's going to be driving have to have a medical opinion every three years that says they don't have any mental or physical disability or disease?
Or your statute.
Okay. So, that's another huge step. I've never been asked for that when I've driven. Okay. So, that'll be in that flow list of things that you're doing. And that includes, I mean, mental disability. I mean, are, there's standards of what constitutes a mental disability that's going to make you unfit to drive?
For purposes of driving, I believe the doctors would be able to offer.
To, the doctor would offer the opinion as to whether they're safe, okay.
That's something we can maybe run through our quick clinic for just, I would think, maybe a very short.
No. Why would you run that through the clinic?
Because that would be a licensed provider certifying.
Yeah, but that's not your provider. I mean, and these are random people who are not insured by us.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to prevent, I guess, I want to be a, I want to be a, I want volunteer drive for a field trip. I want to help out. But the, the bar of making me go do a paid appointment when there's obviously nothing wrong, now I'm paying for the privilege of driving, that might just be a bar that's too high.
But why isn't it just like the WIAA student athlete physical form, right? So, you know, there, there have been, there have been times in the last couple of years where my son's physicals did not occur at the same time that they needed the form. So, basically, the nurse filled out, stamped it, good to go, because they've already had the physical.
Oh, I see, so there's, we're, I see, I see. We're not, many people could satisfy this requirement without making a special appointment.
Right.
Probably, probably most of the time.
Just to testify. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, but this is not really our choice, this is state statute. This is in the state statutes for alternative use from the, from the primitive, you know, so.
Sure. Right, I was talking about access to exams for this, but I, I get it. I was, I was thinking of a much bigger hurdle when most of the time this could just be a fax from your provider to the.
You know, I think I missed something. Define for me what is transporting students as a volunteer? Where, what, what, where does that occur?
I think it's, wasn't it in the first paragraph?
Yes, I, I think I missed it, I think I'm confusing myself now, so.
And there's a couple here, and they are very similar, but wasn't this one for just to and from school events? It's not necessarily, I thought when we discussed it, like, parents getting together and taking kids to football practice. You know, we carpool with my child, and I, correct? This would be for school events, correct?
For school events, so, for example, the tennis team is going to an event, and they're having parents volunteer to drive the team, and they're getting a bus. So, it'd be those parents who are driving the students other than their own student. It would not be my neighbor and I carpool for tennis practice, and we have our own schedule arranged, trying to get our kids to practice. It's where the school has organized and asked for volunteers to drive for those events.
And so, so now the tennis event is over, and the kid doesn't want to go home on the bus, the kid wants to go home with the Jeffreys because they live next door. That's being transported from.
Well, there is a separate procedure for that, which would, it would, it went under the, or the policy.
Co-curricular wing.
The co, that's the co-curricular, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
This is where I'm confusing myself. So, this whole conversation that we're talking about also applies to people driving for co-curriculars, or no? Just for, just for school events?
I think the situation we're talking about, that the policy on the co-curricular transportation will trump, will trump when you're.
Okay.
Yes.
Melissa, what about parents who've been convicted of DUI? And would that show up in the background check?
Absolutely.
And it's my understanding that at some point that stuff goes away on your record?
Not really.
No.
Okay, that's a comfort.
No, not, nothing, it doesn't go away.
Okay.
People think that, and they're wrong.
It's a myth.
It may drop off after a long, long time, it may drop off of your MVR, but it would still be on your criminal, or on your C cap.
They don't, it would drop off your, your motor vehicle record.
Oh, everything else.
You might get your, you might get your points back, or you have satisfied the conditions to, you have your points to start, but you're not sports.
That, that mark is always going to be acceptable in the background.
We'll find it.
Did we move this on?
Mm-hmm.
On to co-curricular student transportation. Here's Ms. Jeffrey's question. You said, Ms. Jeffrey's question would be answered here, do you want to answer that enough, please?
Yeah, so, many times, as the, we worked very collaboratively with the activities directors on this policy, and it was really, they had asked for a policy because of situations coming up, such as the one you described. So, if a student wanted to go home with the neighbor, there would be, there, as the policy describes, the procedure for doing so, sign out the notification and so forth, when those requests are.
That's supposed to be done before the fact, not at the event.
Right.
And that's always the bugaboo with some folks.
Before the fact, not at the event.
There has to be prearranged. You can hand a written, if you're the parent taking your own kid home, you can hand the written notice, or you, a lot of coaches will have you sign.
Yeah.
A sheet.
A sheet?
That says I'm taking my kid home.
Yeah.
We have a variety of.
But I can't take my neighbor home unless the parent has, for the event, prearranged for that to happen.
Has actually given permission. Okay.
And we're working on cleaning up the process and the procedures so that we're more consistent. We actually, we actually thought we did do this once before, clean it up and make a process that was consistent throughout all of the middle of the high schools. But it's, I think there's still a version out there too that, you know, one says it had, you have to ask for five days in advance, and some are staying the day of, and some are using one form. So, we're trying to get it cleaned up so that we're using the same form, we actually developed the same process so that one student or parent is, you know, treated differently than one student or another. So, we've got that piece in place to work with this.
And that, to me, goes in part of the expectations coaches and advisors have with their students and students' parents as the season event starts, so they don't get blindsided, because you're right, that's always been problematic.
I think the other piece to this was, I think we believe strongly enough as those are activity directors, that writing to an event and back is our responsibility. We should be transporting our students to our activities and our events, and almost with expectation of philosophically, we should be traveling as a team, and you can compare from the game on the way to the, you know, on the bus and things. So, we want to make sure that our policy reflects that we're going to actually transport, and not you take your car, you take your car, unless there's an extenuating circumstance, you should be traveling as a team, and then traveling back. But we also get that if you're going right past Melissa's door, you know, why would we, why would we make the parent come all the way to school and pick them up when they could just take them home? So, we're trying to meet that balance.
Good luck. Can we move this one on? Next one being transportation for field trips and other district-sponsored trips policy.
And again, I think this is to take them all, trying, you know, bussing kids for field trips and not having parents carpool.
And make, make the practice consistent that if I go to a field trip and my parent's going to take me home, we're using the same process as we are if I'm going to a co-curricular. So we don't have six different forms and parents not sure what the process is. So trying to make sure whether it's a field trip or a co-curricular, same form, same process, and parents just know if that is. And then the same middle three.
I think more of your problem, quite frankly, is we have so many coaches that come from outside the school district currently, and many times, there's a revolving door, or at least a tier revolving door, to get those folks in line to follow these things. That's probably your hardest, hardest part. Move this one on, is there some other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wagner, et al. Human Resources?
The associated job descriptions that Ellen referenced are before you. The first one is the transportation manager. And this would be the upgrade to the executive assistant position. It reflects some of the work that Patty is already doing, as Ellen said. And I think as he said, we were looking to place this in the job grade of, I believe, a sixteen, which we feel would be in line with other positions of similar responsibilities. It's a, it's a salary schedule we already have.
Can you talk about all three, then we'll just open up your questions?
Oh, it's a twelve.
Twelve.
I think he wrote it in his memorandum. It's a twelve. It starts at sixty-two thousand three hundred. This would be a, a salary position that would be added to the table of organization.
Could you talk about all three positions and we'll open up for questions, just in, next, but I think-
Then, the second position is the transportation specialist. This person would do routing along with Patty. And this person would not be a manager, but would be, a person would, who we believe at this point would be also a salary position, this would not be a contracted position. And we're looking at this position, this one would be in the salary schedule of sixteen. And you, that starts at forty-three thousand one hundred and eight dollars. And then the drivers would be the people who are actually doing the routes, and would be part of the Patty as well, manager position.
Any questions, concerns? Perhaps you mentioned it before, would you explain how you came up with the salary amounts?
When we look at the responsibilities of the manager, we look at, because we have a number of managers in our, in our district, we look at comparables. And so, we kind of benchmark it to other manager positions with similar responsibility. And this is where both Ellen and I kind of separately came up with the same range. Felt comfortable with it, and I think we should. The, the specialist, Ellen has some knowledge of what these people make, because he's worked with other people, and so we, we put it in this level. It may, you know, this may change depending upon when we post it. Sometimes you find out that the position needs to change a bit, but I think our ranges are broad enough to be able to accommodate and hire somebody and, and who we feel is qualified.
To, just on the, the transportation van driver, do, is there still such a thing as a chauffeur's license? And do they not require?
There's a CDL license, but this job would not require a CDL license.
So there isn't just a regular chauffeur's license? There used to be?
I have not, it's not used in the bus, in the transportation world, but-
Okay, I'm dating myself then, okay.
But maybe a chauffeur's license is more like a CDL type?
No. Because CDL, that's semi-drivers.
Yeah, trucks, yeah.
Yeah, but that's-
Yeah, no, chauffeur, okay, because in a previous life, I-
I'm sure, so I don't know chauffeurs.
What about taxis?
Yeah, yeah, don't they have chauffeur's licenses?
Or do they just have regular driver's licenses?
I think they have just driver, driver's license.
Really?
The CDL is needed for when you transport more than the ten students, so.
Yeah.
Chris, I think it's been Googled, could I ask the gentleman raising his hand if he has more?
Why, in matter of fact, it has been.
Thank you, Brian.
In order to be a school shuttle van or alternative vehicle, refer to any school van that carries nine passengers or fewer and that's not painted yellow. You need to be at least eighteen years old, own either a valid Wisconsin driver's license or a valid license and endorsement from another jurisdiction, retain to the appropriate class of vehicle, and have no disqualification. So they say nothing about chauffeurs.
Okay, then, that's a thing of the past.
We are eighteen years old, aren't we?
I'd like to know about snowmobiles.
Perhaps at a winter meeting, Brian, thank you.
Excuse me, move on.
Who, I, I'm, this question comes from one statement in the specialist job description. It says trains and monitors drivers. And I guess, help, explain to me how, what the supervision model will be for our own van drivers? I'm assuming the bus company is who supervises their own drivers. But for our van drivers, who, who will be that supervisory person?
Well, ultimately, it would be Patty, but the specialist will be, I think, the person that will, will be part of hiring the drivers and also will be the one that is giving them their marching orders every day, working with them, dispatching them to. That would be what the specialist would also be doing.
Okay, but if there's a concern or something that would go up to Patty in terms of-
I think what we're going to find with the vans is, the, the routes are going to be altered almost on a daily basis. Because with McKinney-Bentle students, we need to make changes quickly.
Yeah.
And that's one reason why we want to use the vans. So, somebody's just going to have to double check with those drivers every day to make sure they know where they're going.
Yeah, so I guess I'm talking more about supervising, you know, if there's, there's concerns about performance as, as a van driver, that's you, okay.
Well, you keep asking questions and I think of other ones. Any thoughts, and you don't have to answer this now, eventually putting in those vans cameras, protection for students and for the drivers, something to think about. Any other concerns with this, and we'll just move this on?
Nope.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thanks, Chris. We have a closed session, I'll read that motion. It's been scheduled for Monday, June 2nd, immediately following the adjournment at the work session meeting at the district office building. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen twenty-five-one C, considering appointments, motion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen twenty-five-one F, considering financial, medical, social, personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where parenthood applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wet personnel matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate options for both sessions provided by law.
So move, second.
Warren, hi, Becker?
Hi.
Leica?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Belloni?
Aye.
Wait, sorry.
Carrying seven zero, will be across the hall.